All right, I'm going to call this meeting of the Cookeville City Council open and order. First, I'd like to call the roll call, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
Present, one absent.
All right, we have a quorum. If everybody would please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
If I could make a suggestion, I really appreciate this. Our moment of silence and silent prayer, if everybody could just remember all the folks with recent storms, the deaths, and the tragedies that's been going on with those folks in those southern towns, if we could just remember those folks.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is to consider approval of our agenda as presented. And if I could have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that? If not, then I'll ask everybody to vote. Please vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, the agenda is, as presented, is approved. Okay, under Old Business, we have, our first item is Consider the Approval of the Minutes of our previous council meeting that was held on April 21st, 2011. And if I could have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Do we have any questions or discussions on this motion? Okay, if not, then I'd ask everybody to vote. Please vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item two, the minutes are approved. Again, under Old Business, we have item three. It's Consider on the second and final reading ordinance 0110304, which is a rezoning tax map number 83, parcel 108.03, located on West Cemetery Road, west of 1801 South Jefferson Avenue. This is from an RS 20 single-family residential to general commercial, and Mr. James Mills is sponsoring this.
Mr. Vice Mayor members, the property proposed for rezoning depicted on the screen. There's an aerial view. Survey of the property and the current zoning. It consists of approximately 1.178 acres. The planning commission is recommending for approval of the rezoning. The planning commission concurs with the recommendation. We've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, second. Any questions for Mr. Mills on this item?
Mr. Mills, would you show us the aerial?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, please. Okay, thank you.
Just as a kind of an observation, I drove by the other day and just wanted to take a look at it. Of course, it's that piece of property, which is zone general commercial, is actually closer to the school than the previous property was that they would have had. And for the school not to say anything, and for the residents not to say anything, I think it's fine. If nobody disapproves with that, we're ready to go. So, okay, do we have any other questions for Mr. Mills?
No.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask for us to go ahead and vote on that. If you would, please vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we have now finished our Old Business. We'll continue to our consent agenda, and that begins with item four, and it's Consider a Wording Bid for Cable from the Electric Department. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we have, this is our consent agenda, okay. And we have item five is Wording a Bid for a Portable Air Compressor. This comes from our Water Control Department. And then item six is Considering Approval, an RFP, for Analytical Testing upstream sample for nutrients, and this comes from our Water Control Department. Does anybody have any questions over our consent agenda?
I don't.
Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Move for Approval.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and any further discussion? If not, then I'll ask for everybody to vote. Please vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, and that moves us now to our New Business, beginning with item seven. Item seven is to hold a public hearing and Consider on the first reading ordinance number 0110405, amendments to the zoning code relating to bed and breakfast establishments in our RS zones here in Cookeville. Mr. Mills is sponsoring this.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Members, this proposed amendment was initiated at the request of a property owner on East Fourth Street. Bed and breakfast establishments are defined in part by the Cookeville zoning code as a private home, inn, or other residential facility offering overnight accommodations. They are regulated by the Tennessee Department of Health, and according to the Department of Health, there are currently no permits issued for bed and breakfast establishments anywhere within the city of Cookeville. Under our current zoning code, bed and breakfast homes are prohibited in all RS, single-family residential districts, and there are four of those, RS 20, RS 15, 10, and 5. They are allowed as permitted uses only within our CG, general commercial district. They're allowed as uses permitted on appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals within the RM 8, RM 14, which are both multifamily residential districts, the CBD, CN, CL, and university districts, subject to specific requirements in the zoning code, which are found in Section The following standards are currently specified in Section 206.3. There shall be no more than five guest rooms, and no guest shall stay for more than seven consecutive days. A current guest register shall be kept by the owner. The owner or operator must reside on the premises. Required off-street parking shall be located to the rear of the principal structure. The only meal to be provided to guests shall be breakfast, and it shall be only served to guests taking lodging in the facility. No food preparation or cooking for guests shall be conducted within a bedroom made available for guests. There should be no alterations to the residential structure, which will indicate that the exterior of the structure is used for any other purpose in a residential dwelling unit, including permitted accessory buildings, and also the provisions of Tennessee Code, Section 68, 14-501 through 503, shall be met, and those are the Tennessee Department of Health requirements. In considering this amendment, the planning commission reviewed the regulations of 10 other Tennessee municipalities of similar size to Cookeville, and approximately half of these cities were similar to Cookeville, and they banned bed and breakfast establishments in single-family residential districts. The planning commission did a great deal of study on this, in addition to looking at the other 10 cities, and in the ordinance before the council, the zoning code would be amended to allow bed and breakfast establishments in the RS 10, RS 15, and RS 20 zoning districts only as used permitted on appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and subject to the standards in Section 206.3. And additionally, Section 206.3 would be amended to add additional protection for bed and breakfast locations in residential areas. Those additional changes included, in RS districts, you'd be limited to no more than four bedrooms instead of the five. Also, in RS districts, the home would have to be a minimum of 3,000 square feet in size. The Board of Zoning Appeals would have the authority to acquire additional screening for off-street parking to minimize the impact on adjacent residential properties. And if it's located in a historic zoning district, you must first obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Zoning Commission before the Board of Zoning Appeals could grant the variance. And then the last change was to allow parking outside the rear area of the principal structure if the Board of Zoning Appeals approves that. This ordinance also amends the definition that we currently have of bed and breakfast establishments to reference the Tennessee Department of Health. Our ordinance currently references the Department of Environment and Conservation. But these amendments have been recommended by the planning commission and are also recommended by the planning department. If you've got any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mills. I'd like, before we ask any questions, let's go ahead and just get this on the floor with the first motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Now, do I have any questions from the council?
I've only gotten one comment. How about, has the planning commission, have you gotten phone calls or anything regarding this?
I think we've had one call regarding it. It was mostly to find exactly what we were trying to do.
Yes.
I think the strangest thing we've gotten, or not strangest, but the main call we had was that we couldn't believe we didn't have any bed and breakfast in Cookeville.
Yes. The only comment that I've gotten, I supplied the draft to the person who was worried about it, and haven't heard back from them since, and quite frankly, even I didn't know we didn't have bed and breakfast. And in my experience, when I've gone to other places, most bed and breakfasts are located in residential sections, and oftentimes in the historical sections of the town.
Well, that's, since you noted that, when we looked at the other 10 municipalities, four of those five that did allow it restricted it to historic districts.
Right, right, so...
Mr. Mills, what was the reason? You said of the cities, like cities, that were same appropriate, approximate size of Cookeville, you said that number of them did not, they banned them pretty much like we did. What were their reasons? I'm just curious.
Well, we didn't talk to them. We just looked at their regulations, but I would assume it was the same reason we didn't. The concern about it being converted into a full commercial use and the impact it would have on single-family areas in terms of the traffic coming in and out, that's, I would assume, because that's the same reason that we originally didn't include it in our code.
I appreciate what the planning commission did, because you guys handed us all this different, the different codes for each different community that did have them, and there were some cities that had like, no codes or no rules to follow, and others just had just so many, I don't know how they could even think of trying to follow all these rules. I don't know why they would even want to put a breakfast in, but I kind of appreciate what the planning commission did. They really seemed to kind of be middle of the road, and I'm just kind of curious, saying, you know, this is kind of, again, this is new territory for us, so that's why I was asking about which ones were banned, if they had like, a bad experience or something, but...
Not that we're aware of. I think it's important to note and stress that this requires that any bed and breakfast in a residential area go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, which requires a public hearing, which requires notice of adjoining property owners, so that they're aware and be able to come and comment if they do have concerns, and you'll have to meet all those conditions before the Board of Zoning Appeals can grant you the permission to locate a bed and breakfast. So that gives you that extra layer of protection, and that's what I think, the planning commission did have some concerns about this, so Mr. Woodford can speak on it, but we debated this and went to try to make sure that if we're going to allow these, that we put as much protection as we can in there for adjoining property.
Well, in looking at this, and after the person called me about it, I studied it, and quite frankly, it is extremely restrictive. And I think it definitely would protect the neighborhoods because of the so many restrictions on it.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, definitely, you know, it very clearly states that they would have to maintain the appearance of a regular home. I did have a question. Is there anything in here about signage?
They're regulated by our sign regulations, and they'd be prohibited from having any sign that would indicate it's anything other than a residential structure.
Okay.
One other thing I want to note, that when we first started reviewing this, something that's unique to us, I think we only found it in one other community, is the minimum size of the structure. When we originally looked at it, the first draft, I believe, if you're correct, if I'm wrong, it was 5,000 square feet.
Wow.
To make sure that, you know, that this is a structure that you typically think of as a bed and breakfast, not a, you know, your typical three-bedroom ranch house, so that's why we did come up with the square footage. Now, it was dropped down to the 3,000. The planning commission felt that'd be more reasonable.
All right. Being the representative of the council and the planning commission, definitely want to commend the planning commission for the hard diligence of work you did. Very thorough. They tried to be fair with the property owners, enhance the city of Cookeville by offering a bed and breakfast, which we don't have right now, and also the people that serve on the planning commission. And there was a lot of work and thought that went into this to protect the neighborhoods and have it where the people, if somebody does want to have a bread and breakfast, that the people in that area have a way to say they're for it or against it. So it's very well thought out and well planned. The planning department did a great job, and the people on the planning commission were trying to be very thorough and professional in making sure that it was done right.
Well, and once again, in, you know, our studies through the chamber and elsewhere, they want, you know, they encourage us to encourage tourism, and many people that travel throughout the United States do travel from bed to bre- bed bre- they prefer that mode of accommodation. There you go.
It just gives us another option.
Bed to breakfast.
Very good. Any other council members, do you have any other questions or comments for Mr. Mills? Okay, if not, I'm going to go ahead and ask us for, or ask for us to vote.
Do you want to ask the audience if they have any comments?
Sure. If there's, if any folks out there have any questions or concerns to address to the council before we vote on this? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All of us in favor, vote, or against?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, and last item on our agenda is Consider, item eight, this is Consider Wording a Bid for Work Truck, and this comes from our Electric Department, Mr. Tony Peak sponsoring this.
Vice Mayor and Council, we're requesting approval to purchase a 2011 year model, three-quarter ton diesel work truck, and from Cookeville Ford for $30,785. I'd recommend your approval.
So it's not a play truck, it's a work?
It's a work truck.
A big gator?
There is a difference.
All right, do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Do you guys have any, anybody have any questions?
No.
Comments, concerns? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and ask for the council to vote.
Thank you.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Great, and that ends our agenda as, in our, this ends our agenda. This is a period in our meeting where we have opportunity for any citizens and/or delegations to get up and speak their mind. We just ask if you get up and state your name, your business, and kind of limit it, Anna Ruth, there's just a couple, three minutes if you could.
I will try. I'm Anna Ruth Burrows, as you all well know, and to the members of the city council. This is regarding Doug and Sarah Hutchins, and Mr. Hutchins is here. On April the 11th, 2011, Doug Hutchins of the Beverly Hills subdivision came home to find an 84-pound rock, we have that rock, had crushed through his roof at his home. It landed in the Hutchins bedroom, knocking out the power, breaking windows, destroying walls, and crushing Sarah's jewelry box, including all the jewelry, and her oak dresser, the oak dresser, leaving a mess of dust, dirt, and insulation all over the room. This damage is the result of the blasting done by the Cookeville Limestone Quarry, and I would not have believed that that rock went that way had I not been up there to see. So it would be nice if you all went up there to see that. Mr. Hutchins will be glad to show you, I'm sure. I issue this council a challenge to do something about this matter. The Hutchins were lucky that no one was injured this time. I feel this is the, this is only the beginning of this type of incident. I'm sure something will happen unless hope it's not devastating. You, our city council, need to step up to the plate and represent the people that you were elected to represent. The people of Beverly Hills subdivision and surrounding areas need your help and support. Something must be done about that, and I'm sure your city attorney could find something, and Mr. Shipley, we could also use your help as well, in any way.
Thank you, Anna Ruth. Doug, do you have any questions? Do you have any comments?
Just a real quick comment. This is, you know, not a common occurrence, obviously, but what we do fight constantly is dust. In some cases, we'll wake up to a quarter inch of dust on decks over cars. Occasionally, in July, it looks like it snows up on the top of the hill, and that's where the wind is just blowing dust out of the forest, and that's an ongoing problem.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Judy Butler. I live at 925 Skyline Drive. As you know, I've been here before with the committee for Beverly Hills. I am, it's getting springtime, and I'm out in the yard quite a bit, and I'm noticing a lot of the county trucks, a lot of the T-Doc trucks, a lot of those trucks that go up and down the road are not covered, and the speed is unreasonable coming down that hill. And I think that somebody needs to regulate what is going on up there for the residents that live in that neighborhood. We've worked all of our life to pay for our homes, and now they're worthless almost on the market, so that needs to be considered.
Any other citizens that would like to have the opportunity to get up here and speak? If you just keep, state your name and just keep your comments, just a couple minutes, we'd appreciate that very much.
My name is Brenda York. My dad's property adjoins the rock quarry. We went back in March and checked the back property, because we have cattle that's back there and everything, and found rock this big through the fence. My mom called and tried to get ahold of Jeff Littrell, left him a message, asked him to call back. No call. My sister called two weeks ago, and she said he would have someone go out and talk with my mom and dad. He did not talk with them. Apparently, he went directly to Cookeville Limestone. They came out the next day, three men, that worked for, I assume, Jim Littrell or Jeff Littrell, and went back to the back of the property with my mother and dad and said, "Well, we don't see anything wrong here." Of course not. You could tell where that the day before, the ground had been all trompiled down, the weeds that had started growing up had been trompiled down, and I have pictures of those, have pictures before. And that was one of the things that the guys, the three gentlemen, and I don't have their names, came out and said, "What do you have proof?" Well, my mom didn't, couldn't think at the time to tell them that me and my sister both have proof. But they had taken forked sticks and had raised the fence back up, but there's still a gaping hole in the fence where the cattle could get through. There's a tree that has also fell down. It was old, natural, probably, don't know, but there are boulders. We took a measuring stick, or yardstick, ruler, whatever you want to call it, and I asked, I'm sorry, I just got off working my minds on other things, but I asked in one of the previous council meetings that when the quarry was given the QM status, if they had to follow by the guidelines under the QM status. And one of the things that it says under there, that they are in a bigger, about the landscaping and stuff, they're supposed to be 150 feet off the line. Besides the rocks that were on the fence, through the fence, we started measuring and walked back down the line. 10 feet. We still have yet to see Mr. Littrell, the codes person. What can be done about it? And if you'll remember, I asked you if they had to abide by the codes that were set forth in the QM thing, and you said yes. What can this council do to make this happen? It's getting worse and worse, and they're building it up and up. And in the codes thing, it says that it's supposed to be ground cover that is deciduous all year long. There's nothing like that. It is a pile of rocks that now is probably 20-foot high, and what they've done, they've got a building that they have built to do, I guess, their service work or whatever, and they've made a V in the rocks. Now they're turning their water down on us, and I have pictures of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your candid comments. We do appreciate that. As a council member, we do appreciate hearing your concerns. Council members, do you have any questions or any further comments?
Is there any dialogue between the people that live in the neighborhood and Cookeville Limestone? Has there been any one on some? How has that been?
Not productive.
Not productive? And you've come to them with a list of...
There, you know, we, some of this has played out in front of the city council over several meetings, where we voiced our concerns just like this, and the people that run the quarry are present, so we complained numerous times about dust, noise, excessive blasting and vibration.
Right.
This goes on for years. This has gone on for years.
I'm going to speak personally, I'm not speaking for the council, but as a council member and a citizen of Cookeville, of course, when Cookeville's citizen safety is in peril, this really bothers me. So when this event happened, it caught my attention, obviously, and as a city council member, I want to assure you that I want to do everything I can possible to try to keep this sort of thing from happening. Of course, you also understand too, Doug, that there's a lot of grandfathering, legalisms, et cetera, et cetera. But as a council member, sitting on this council, I want to assure you that I appreciate the challenge that you've issued to this city council to try to find, to get down to the bottom of this, and I will do my due diligence on this. When it comes to safety, sometimes, because of the way things work out, they just work out. And Anna Ruth, you know quite clearly how sometimes there's some things that citizens of the county municipality, there's a lot of times it's because of grandfathering and because of laws that are set up, there's just nothing you can do. You remember the Tennessee Motor Speedway? But when it comes to safety, we'll, as a city council member, I'm going to do everything I can to try to help keep your home safe, that we can do. So I appreciate your comments and your candid conversations, and we'll look. Yes, ma'am?
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
We have been up here and been up here and talked to the previous city council, talked to you all, and I feel like personally, it is falling on deaf ears. I don't, it's nothing against you all personally or anything, but it just keeps happening over and over. It's not only devaluing, it's done damage to Doug's house, it's devalued all of our property around there. When we had a small county rented or leased quarry that let off maybe one blast a month at the most, and now we have them going off two and three times a week, you know, and we call about the fire marshal, and they come out, and we ask them, "Who regulates this?" They regulate themselves. We call the EPA about one of them. "Who regulates this? Who tests it?" They regulate themselves. There has been so much, I mean, they sold my first cousin had a boar over on my, you know, one of the landowners' dad sold the boar that didn't even belong to him, goes driving down across property that doesn't belong to him. You can't talk to them because they do nothing wrong.
Let me just, I'm going to, again, speak for myself. I'm, as a new city council member, I have to claim ignorance on a lot of this, okay? I just, I'm not up to speed on a lot of things that have went on with your dilemma, and that's kind of where I stand.
It's going to get worse.
And, but I want to give you, just from me personally, that I will do my diligence to look into this. Now, I want you to understand too, that sometimes, sometimes as a municipality and as a county, there's sometimes, there's some things we can't do because we can't, the municipality cannot do because it's, I mean, this is the land of the free and home of the brave, and we can't just tell a business what they can do sometimes because of grandfathering or whatever. I just want to give you that as a disclaimer. And I know you already understand that, but if there's anything that this city can do... that, but if there's anything that this city can do in order to keep our, our citizens safe, I, I personally feel responsible, but would like to see whatever we can do, okay? It's been my experience, there's been situations where, you know, when I was at the county, that we couldn't do anything for situations, and we, we, we just had to say, you know, you know, "We're sorry." Remember that, Anna Ruth? We had to ask them, we had to ask them just to get, get a good lawyer and make, make some phone calls.
And they can't even get one around here to do that.
Yeah.
They have to go out and...
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate, and I appreciate your frustration, and I want to thank you for, again, thank you guys for coming here and your comments and, you know, stating your, stating your, your concerns. I appreciate that.
I'm sure they do that.
Anna Ruth, that's right, I appreciate that, yeah, thank you. Council members, do you have any other questions for citizens here?
You know, we're all neighbors in this, and, you know, when you have a neighbor, whether it be a citizen or a corporate neighbor, you would hope that you could get along, and it looks like you've made an effort. And I don't know what, I haven't heard both sides, but both, both sides need to be verbal, and communication should be between, you know, Putnam Limestone or Cookeville Limestone and the people that live in the neighborhood, and hopefully there will be some dialogue in the future, that they can try to work, you guys work together on this.
Okay, with the comments, I'm gonna call this meeting done.